Thank you, welcome everybody. Let's see, I want to welcome guests first here we have Marie, welcome Marie. And welcome Cindy and Bill. And is there anybody else that I can't see? That is. No, okay. Alright, so we have, well, we have three people so far from the team. I'm not sure that makes a quorum, does it? Doesn't.
No.
If we need five, if we need five for a quorum, alright, so we can't approve minutes until we have two more people.
Yeah, we can just kind of fly through, it's a December meeting.
Yeah. So I have on my list for the agenda, under waste reduction, I have a number of things, so first one I have is recycling drive updates. Mari, you want to handle that one? You're breaking up a little bit. You're breaking up a little bit in the car.
Another thirty or forty-five seconds, hold on a second, if you can hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Just passing a tough area, I know where it is, it should be fine in another thirty seconds, okay. Okay, am I going with recycling drive update?
Yes.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
I hope I'm through that area.
Yeah, I can hear you so far. Now it's getting funky again. Give it a minute, Mari, hold on. Keep talking. Yep, there it is, back again.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you hear me? We can hear you. If you can hear us. But I don't think you can, maybe. Hold on, what else is on here? Mari, we're gonna give you a minute to get out of whatever zone you're in. Meanwhile. Mary, on Help See. I sent you that information about the nature center, so whatever. Whatever we need to get signed up to be for the nature center to be the recipient of the five percent, I guess it is of whatever they sell, Helps See sells stuff in in their online clothing store, I guess it's a clothing store, right?
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's basically the whole like a consignment shop online, and so in trying to, you know, they take all this product in, a lot of it gets shipped to other countries, but they also try to do local type selling, and so they, they don't have enough information on this yet because they're new to it, but I figure five percent, you know, that if we might as well, it's the same thing as we're doing with, with Helps See and Bay State, if we're ending up making money off of, you know, off of being able to reuse, we might as well, so, yeah, so I will, I will give them the, who should be the contact on that?
Use me, just me, I'll do it.
Okay, okay, so I'll send that back to you. And I did speak, somebody from Monroe, I'm trying to find the email now, somebody from Monroe had gotten in touch with me when I was sick last week, and then I got back to her this morning, but she was interested from Monroe on their conservation commission and was interested in, I think, trying to get their their commission a little more involved in things, and they were interested in textile recycling, so I just explained what we do, the number of pounds, and said that since, you know, we have the active sustainable women that are at the monthly drives, you know, we're kind of getting the education out that way, we have Helps See and Bay State, so I don't know if there would really be interest or not to have, you know, to have a, like a spring kind of a drop-off place for textiles, because the Helps See truck would come to that. So we can talk about that going forward, see what the town thinks. We had, December's too hard for during the, what do you call it, hazardous waste day, weather dependent and everything like that, I didn't want to tempt anything at that point, but, so thinking maybe spring cleanup, so you know, we can discuss that, but, but Monroe, they, she was saying they, it's been very tough to get anything going there, so.
She's from the conservation commission of Monroe?
She's, I think she's the secretary, I can't find the email.
But she's from their conservation commission somewhere.
Yes, and.
Okay, and she wants to, and she wants to have some textile recycling.
Yeah, I think they want to partner, partner with us, I mean, you know, Monroe's are their same transfer station, but I think they want to partner as well as, as we were doing for like, say, Wilton and Fairfield and picking brains and seeing how to get things accomplished, because they, you know, they're listed in twenty-one, they had listed a resolution from their town council to form a sustainable committee, but it doesn't look like anything has really happened, and it was more, it would be more like George, Rena, so less of the people that were appointed, or they were going to appoint, weren't actually as we are, where it's more of a group of volunteers that you know, can do, so, so I don't know if that's the issue or not, I haven't heard back from her, but anyway, they were, they've reached out, and so we'll see what comes of that, but, you know, the Helps See, they had the lowest pickup they've had so far for curbside of like sixty-five pounds for November, so they're gonna, but you know what, I haven't, I've just been busy, I just not, I didn't promote it again, because I figure it's the holidays, people are doing their own thing, but maybe after Christmas when all the new things come in, and people are then cleaning out closets again, but so they're gonna have like a three-bag minimum for them, but, you know, Bay State, we're still doing fine on as well, so.
Mary, can I ask, what does that mean, a three-bag minimum?
So if, if some, if they're going to come to my house to pick up, they're gonna make the trip out, and I have like a tea, you know, a bag with six t-shirts in it, it's not really worth it for them.
Oh, okay.
So, so, yeah.
How big are the bags that they have to be?
It, you know, it's, it's any type, I mean, some people may use garbage bags, some people may use tall kitchen garbage bags, so I think it's, yeah, I think it's more or less they just, for the amount that we're getting, and now as people are, you know, same thing with, with Bay States, it's, it kind of, you know, got a little bit lower during the, you know, October, November period, so it's not top of mind for people right now, I don't think, but, so they just want to make sure it's worth it for them to go out and the pay, you know, pay their hauler and the gas and everything to go to someone's house.
What was that name? The name of the company?
Helps See. And they're the curbside, and then Bay State Textile is the, the one where we have one at Madison and one at Health Press Middle School.
Okay, is that on the website, so that I can?
Yes, yeah, it's under the recycle, recycle reuse link.
Thank you.
Mary, is there any, I'm back guys, is there any conversation or plan to add a Bay State drop-off at the transfer station as part of the reconfiguration, because that would loop Monroe in nicely, I think.
Yeah, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure at this point, it's, we're getting closer, it looks like to get it done, and I know you saw the email from George where he's gonna be speaking with Fairfield about composting, so I mean, at this point, I feel like we have it, we, you know, we kind of have it covered rather than adding one more container at the transfer station, we could certainly add a second, you know, we could add two more containers at other parks of town if we see that there's a need, but, you know, I guess that, you know, if George is interested in that, that's fine, but I, it just seems like we're doing, we're doing pretty well with having them at the at the schools, I'd like to get a little more, a little more information out about it again to remind people that, you know, it is there.
Maybe they could have one at, at their high school or middle school in Monroe, if they're.
Well, that's, that's what I figured they were gonna try to do, and so that's what I explained, that, you know, Helps See, we get sixty dollars a ton, and Bay State, we get a hundred, so it's not a huge difference, but, you know, if I have to encourage somebody, I'm gonna say, get in your car and take the five minutes to drop it there, because we get, you know, we get more funding coming in from that, so. And then at some point, as we continue to build, we should be about, I think we're maybe like thirteen to fourteen hundred dollars that we've collected, that's in our revenue account, and that's separate from the printer, the green planet printer in cartridges, so at some point, we can start, you know, discussing how we'd like to use, not that it's a lot, but to start using those funds.
That's good. Alright, thanks on that, so Mari, you're back. I think. Yes, hold on. Where'd everybody go?
My dog was, was barking, so. I had to leave.
Didn't, didn't hear Mari, Mari, are you, are you, can you hear us? No? Where is Mari, that she keeps dropping out? I do not know. She's got the food rescue food scrap initiative, wait a minute, food scrap initiative is, who's running that? That is. I don't even remember.
Sorry, that was Pam talking to George.
Yeah, so the foods, what's, yeah, go ahead, Mari, you're back, so hopefully, hopefully you won't drop out, kind of for now. Yeah, so the recycling drive updates, I know the.
Yeah, I mean, really, Mary summed it up.
How, we're doing a couple of things new on, on the cycling drive updates, right, so they're not taking the prescription bottles, right? And.
We lost her again, we're not taking the prescription.
Not taking prescription bottles, but we are.
Too expensive for the shipping labels, I believe.
Empty, empty prescription bottles are not being accepted, oh, okay.
Yeah. It wasn't a very big volume, but, and then we're doing, doing alright with those black plastic food trays, I saw a bunch of them there on Saturday.
Yeah, I dropped off, Marty had a meeting this past week, and there was a lot of leftovers, it was like pickup appetizer food, and so I had brought a couple of bags of things down for them, and then brought those, and they were so, they were like so happy that Trumble was collecting those, because they're, you know, like right there, she's like, I can make these and put them, you know, put them right out in refrigerators now, so.
This is who's saying, who says this?
This is, this is the black containers, this is, this is at Fridgeport.
What is that, what is that?
Yeah, Fridge, Fridgeport, it's, they have, I think, three of them. Yeah, and that's, so that's the one, we had received an email, I can't remember Reggie, I believe it was, and so Mari was in touch with them, and I had just happened to see something online, and it shared it, and then, you know, Mari was in touch and, and with the organizers, and so they added that, which was a great idea to the Saturday recycling drives, and then anybody can just bring them down, it's, you know, it's right by Thomas Merton House, basically, and they accept other food items as well.
Guys, I just pulled over where I have reception, I think.
Yay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I stopped driving, I hope that I, I'm in the area where I can at least finish up a little. Yeah, we didn't get that much black plastic this month compared to usual, but.
Oh, really, okay.
Yeah. No, we're, we're starting, we're starting to get a lot of requests for lots of different things, so we'll see where it goes, the chip bags, I'm still trying to confirm if we can drop those off at either Subaru or REI, hopefully that will work out, and then Subaru takes those little K-cups, so I'm gonna find out what capacity they can handle, if we can start taking those, but I heard someone say something about prescription bottles.
Right, those are no, no longer.
No, I check on Walgreens, they won't take them, they'll take like one or two if you have a prescription there, but they won't take a drop-off, so.
Right, okay.
It's too bad.
But with regard to the black plastic food containers, they also take the white ones too, right?
I brought, I brought all different types downs, and they took them all.
And they like, and they, do they prefer with lids, sometimes I get ones that don't have lids, they just have a plastic wrap covering, and then the, so it's just a, you know, it's a black plastic tray, but it doesn't have a lid.
They prefer it, but if you don't, I think they'll still take it, yeah, I think they'll take it without, I can confirm, but.
Yeah, I'm interested to see, because, you know, with anything, these, these containers are not always clean, and I'm wondering how they deal with the the ones that aren't clean, of which I would assume there's a bunch, I mean, they have to, they have to make sure they're clean before they reuse them. Right?
Right, they're supposed to be, they're supposed to be cleaned out, yeah.
Right, and then they probably do a final something or other, I would guess, just to be safe.
I would think so, they're in the, they are in the church right there, so it's.
You're in the church next to Thomas Merton House, you said?
It's, it's, it's around, it's like a block or two away, but it's, but it's part of a church, and so the refrigerator, like if you Google them, you're on Instagram, you'll see the picture of what it looks like, but it's a large refrigerator, like a commercial refrigerator with the two sides, and, and then they also have a pantry area next to it, but they collect other items, coats, you know, sweaters, blankets, things like that, so they're inside with all that, so I have to, I would assume that they are washing what they get, if they think it's not one hundred percent clean.
Yeah, I'll look into that a little bit. Alright, so that's good, anything else on the recycling drive that you can think of? And then there's the food scrap initiative. I don't even remember.
Collective effort, yeah, I mean, it's been a collective effort with Pam, Mary, I think you've been on a meeting over the years, but it just kind of recirculated since we found out that some of the towns were using their NIP funds to to fund the food scrap collection, I thought, let's, let's see where we are with it, and seeing if we can do a satellite location, so that's why I reached out to Greenwich, so George. Trustfully doing that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, so we're talking about the composting stuff.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, the, the more up-to-date term is food scrap collection, because it doesn't necessarily have to be composted, or people think that means there has to be a big pile on site, it's really just managing the food scrap collection to get it to the appropriate place, to a digester or whatever else.
Right, right, digester complex or something.
Sorry to.
So that is, George was going to visit Fairfield, right?
Yeah.
Do you know when he was planning to do that, or if he's done it, we don't know, right?
I think it was sometime this week, he was gonna either go there or touch base to get, just to kind of get more information, probably from the town side.
Right.
You know, what, what, you know, what are the limits, do you have issues with contamination, cleanliness, budgeting, you know, that, all those kind of side confirms with his side.
Alright, that's good. Anything else on food scraps?
Well, not really scraps, but Maria, I don't know, if, did we discuss, other than with Kevin, the, the food.
Rescue? That's the next.
That's on there, okay, sorry, I didn't look at the agenda.
Yep, that's, well, you're right there, you're right there, so if we're done with food scraps, then food rescue it is, so you're signed up, Mary.
Yeah, I've got to re-sign up again for the Tuesday, when that comes out.
Okay, so that, when did they list that, so food rescue is food rescue US, I guess, right? And they match people who are willing to pick up food that's not used, but still good, from any particular whoever has it, usually a business, right, and, and then to deliver it to someone who needs it at a particular time in a particular way. Right, so.
So you can go on and register yourself, and I forgot what I had to fill out in the beginning, and then you can just go on anytime and sign up for any rescue, you should start getting emails daily, if you want to pick up any, right, it's a little, it's a little busy, yeah, but, yeah, so I just picked up, like I do one on Mondays in town, and then and then I picked up regularly the Thursdays, which I might keep, and then I'll just, I'll just unclaim it if I can't make it that Thursday, which is gonna be like every other Thursday, so I think I can do it this Thursday from Mariana's, but I mean, just as a, as a group, maybe we want to talk about, do we want to reach out to more local Trumble businesses and get more people donating to the food pantry? You know, Haley at Food Rescue has given me some feedback as to which businesses work better than others, for instance, like a dinner restaurant that closes at nine or ten o'clock, a bar is not a good donor, because nobody wants to go then to pick up stuff.
And places might not be open to accept it either.
Exactly, so she said like breakfast and lunch kind of places are good, bakeries, but like the big grocery stores, they already have contracts with the Connecticut Food Bank, so they don't participate, so she's kind of already guided me to narrow down the list, so places like Amariana's, maybe Jay Bagels, Mary, you mentioned, they might already donate, they don't even have to do it through food rescue if.
Yeah, they do it weekly for the food pantry.
Okay.
So, I don't know that there's any benefit to, like, having them contact Food Rescue if they already have something in place, you know what I mean? It would be to get new businesses. So, yeah, if we want to collectively like make a list and contact places, I just, you know, I hesitated, I definitely got a lot of info from Food Rescue before I approached places, because I didn't want to like give out wrong information of what they could offer or not offer, you know what I mean, but I just stopped and engaged interest, and then started a group email with Food Rescue and them, so we could continue doing that if you guys want as a group, you know.
Yeah, are there others besides you and Mary and then Brianna and me now, who are, you know, delivery people, the people who deliver the stuff?
They have a lot of Trumble volunteers, she says, like, there's tons of people, and the only, the only rescues you'll be able to see when you go onto the website are ones that are not regularly adopted, meaning like someone doesn't see it for every week, and they're open. Like if somebody claimed that for this week, you won't see it, so you only see ones that are open, and there's just not a lot in Trumble in particular, so that was the goal, is to get more, but yeah, if like we can't make it, there might be somebody else that wants to pick up the the shift, so don't feel bad, you know, you kids are busy.
Okay. Sounds good. So you might reach out to a couple other places, like Jay Bagels or whatever?
Like, probably like Trumble Cafe, I don't know if Dunkin' Donuts does anything in that, you know, they don't, they have other type things as well, breakfast sandwiches and things, not just donuts. But I, I think since Ralph isn't on here, obviously, we'd like to, you know, maybe if we can just pull a little something together to, to pass to Rena, to just let her know who's participating, and also, you know, as I said, like Sicily participates on their own, same thing, Jay Bagel, so it's not that, we, we do have other businesses that are very generous in, in making donations, but may not be through this, but, but definitely would like to go, you know, through Rena to let her know if we're gonna be approaching anyone to see if they do have the interest.
Yeah, that's why I kind of hesitate to talk to the newspaper until we get a little bit more information, maybe. If you want to do something with Rena, yeah. Honestly, I don't really have the time right now to contact Rena and take the lead on this, I just have too many other things personally going on. If, if you, Mary, if you want to do that, otherwise, you know, I'm, I'm just not gonna.
Yeah, no, that's fine, yeah.
To do more, but I couldn't even do the two I coordinated, and yeah, thank you. You know, I'm certainly happy to collaborate, but, yeah.
Let us know if you, if you, if you can't make Sunday or Thursday, and then we'll.
Okay, yeah.
Be able to pick it up, I think.
Yeah, like I'll let you guys know, and if somebody wants to pick it up, great, if not, then I'll just, you know, put it out into the Food Rescue app, if we will, and let's see, see if somebody else can pick it up, you know. But, yeah, I think I could do this Thursday, so.
Okay, good. Yeah, ready? That's all I have under the waste, what do we call it, waste reduction heading. Unless, unless anybody can think of anything else that we've missed into that area. Is that it? Okay. So I don't have, and if you're raising hands or something, I'm, I'm taking notes, so I can't actually see you, so just, just go ahead and say, ask a question.
Okay, I, I can do a quick Trumble Sustainable Youth update while I'm still in service here.
Yeah, sure, that's good, that's where I was going next, because Mary Ellen's not here, so let's see, yep, so we've got under outreach, we've got T, TSY, and we've got, also, I guess, if you're up on the webpage, updates and revisions on that, so go ahead, however you want to, whichever one you want to take first there, Mari.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I don't know if Cindy's still on, I can't see anything, but thank you for sharing the food drive that Trumble Sustainable Youth planned, I was over at Stern Village just before it happened, and they were really excited that it was occurring, and we collected a few hundred dollars worth of Stop and Shop gift cards, and quite a few boxes, pretty much my car full of food and toiletries, so Brianna is going to coordinate with Stern Village as for an appropriate time to drop off later in the week, which gives us a few days to catch any other trickling in donations, but that was really great, and they're meeting tonight for their monthly meeting, which they might drop to quarterly, because they're not getting a lot of new members, and they already kind of have a group communication system down for planning stuff, I think they're gonna try to speak at the Board of Ed on promoting reusable lunch trays, and then they're gonna obviously follow the legislative session and promote any environmental legislation, so we'll see what happens.
Alright, that sounds great. So, yep, so they're doing, they did that Stern Village activity there where they got the food and cards and stuff, and so what are their other priorities, just a quick reminder, Mari?
Just like the legislative outreach, I think is the biggest one, and then there's a couple of students that want to work on promoting reusable lunch trays, some they can make their voice heard. I have one student who's an Ag student that wants to get involved with pollinator pathways, so I know Pam and Mary Ellen aren't on right now, but I will try to connect him with them to work on that, since I'm not involved with much of that.
Sounds good, alright. And, and then the other thing I have you on probably is, anything on the webpage, updates on the website, revisions or updates on that? Nothing. Nothing, nothing major on that?
Mary, where'd we leave off with that, I kind of forgot.
I didn't know, I didn't know if we lost you again. Oh, sorry, I don't, I don't remember.
I have to drop off, but I'll be back in touch, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, bye-bye. I'm, I'm not sure, did we finish that one page, it was the, there was one that was looping, I could ask Pam, it, it seemed to go back to an old reference of the, remember the batteries and everything, and, and when I looked, when I looked on, online, I didn't see that page, but when you Google it or whatever, it pops up, so it's like an old page somewhere. And then Thanksgiving hit, and then I got sick, so. I haven't done anything.
Yeah, I know. Um.
We do. But.
Just maybe check on the technical and to see if it's still a problem, if it's, if it is, and we can see how to correct it, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, and then we just have to list Ralph online, I just noticed that when I was copying the information for the Monroe people, so Shelby's still on there.
Oh, yeah.
So. I can have, I can have Patty fix that.
Yeah, thank you, I thought it was done, I just noticed it.
That's sort of on my to-do list to check all the boards and commissions, because there's some discrepancies, so I'll, I'll send that to Patty.
Okay, super, thank you. What was next, Kevin, I said I didn't look at the agenda.
Let's see, we have a thousand trees for Trumble, but we don't have Mary Ellen here, I don't know who else is involved with that other than Pam, maybe.
Yeah.
Conservation Commission.
Yeah, we met with George and Dimitri, and it, nothing was really finalized, it went through, Mel wasn't able to be there, so Tim, Tim Coughlin was there and went through everything about the, the size of the diameter we'd be looking at, can we piggyback with Fairfield or, you know, another town to continue to bring the price down, you know, out of the right of way, you know, all the same things that we'd already discussed, so and then I know Mel's mom had been ill, so it just kind of halted at that point, so I, I don't know if anything has been done since then or not. But the goal obviously is to, is to get in there and get going somewhere, whether it's at Long Hill Green or, or in one of the parks, but to get something before the, you know, the, the timeframe for using the money that's in the budget is gone, also missing the planting season, so. Actually, Cindy, do you know if, that, I thought Rena was gonna hear back in November on the Long Hill or the Pavers, perhaps, Grant, do you know, that ever? That's still pending?
Actually, there was a meeting about it today, and I think, so I think there was, I think you'll hear very soon, one way or the other.
Okay, so, yeah, so that had, that had something to do with this as well, so about using and, you know, getting, getting everybody involved, so we just want to make sure we have enough time to use those funds and how we could use them best.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that meeting that you talked about, Tim Coughlin, who was, that was Dimitri, um.
Dimitri, George, um, Tim, and um. Oh, gosh, what is his name? The tree warden from Fairfield was on there as well, because he lives, he lives in, as I thought you heard. He, he lives in Trumbull and he's Fairfield's tree warden, and Dimitri lives in Fairfield and he's Trumbull's tree warden. So.
Is Ken Flacco?
It, it may have been. There were two different, two different men that were on the previous meeting, but. Um, but anyway, so just, you know, just to kind of go over how best practice of how Fairfield has implemented their plan and, and what would work for us. But, you know, obviously, they, they're looking at the right of way. We're looking at staying out of the right of way. So it just has to be the appropriate place, even if it's the right tree, right place. So if you use a larger tree on a non, non-lined side. Um, if it's in the right of way, you know, Trumbull still doesn't want to do that, because we've had, you know, quite the expense on diseased trees, falling trees. Uh, things like that. So um, so anyway, it was, it was really just kind of getting to the point of, of what are the main things we need to concentrate on? Then what are the next steps? And I said, then, you know, Mel had to take a step back at that point. So I haven't heard if anything has progressed from there.
Okay. Um, alright, hopefully moves forward. Uh, what I was gonna say. The uh, alright, so we don't have anything updated from E C D C without Ralph. And Conservation Commission. I know Mel wanted to coordinate some stuff with Conservation Commission and sustainable. But again, without her here, it makes it a little tougher.
Yeah, I know some of like the steep slope, obviously for P and Z, I don't know where that stands for getting done, but the plan of conservation. Um, just got approved for the capital plan. And so that'll start be moving forward. That's a twenty twenty four project, that's every ten years. So I'm sure there'll be, you know, conservation will be a, a main part of that, hopefully as well.
Right, right. Um. Yeah, so there was uh, goals for twenty twenty three was one of the things on here. And um, although we don't have a lot of people here, but we, maybe we can, when we get to our next meeting, we'll have, you know. We can do it by email and come up with a list for our January meeting that we want to follow. Um, but we do want to do the twen- if we can, uh, we, it's not due until the end of January for the meeting schedule, right Cindy? When does that do?
Yeah, that's correct.
End of January. So um, at least, let's talk about it. Um, we, a bunch of people didn't make it today and April called in. Uh, for a minute before Pam, because she's got another teaching gig Monday afternoon, so Mondays aren't really working for her now. Um, I don't know, Mari, you're still here?
Yep, I'm here.
How, what days um, are, are, are good for you?
That Monday does work fine for me. Some of the other days not as, as good, but um. I, you know, I can try to make it work. I don't know.
Are there any, any other days that work, or are they all sort of up in the air and they move around and it's hard to know?
Yeah, my other days of the week seem to be more up in the air with uh, driving to tennis, et cetera. Mondays, for some reason, everyone. Doesn't need me.
Okay.
I don't know why.
Alright, so well, again, that's another thing that we, we can just send it around by email. I'll do that. Um, to see what days we can get, days and times work best for various people.
Like a Tuesday, I could do four. Yeah, like, I mean, there's, there's other options, definitely, but uh.
Alright, maybe I'll do a uh, a doodle or one of those things.
Yeah, yeah.
Can see how it works.
Yeah, until I went to month, I can probably figure out most times, but. Uh, I don't know, life might just be really crazy the next few months. I have no idea, guys. My mom's, my mom's starting hospice tomorrow, so I'm just kind of. Like not really banking on having much brain power or time to take much else on, so.
Right, right.
Do the best I can, you know?
No, yep, that's your priority for sure, so um.
Yeah, definitely. Uh, and thereafter, I just know it's gonna be a little few months of settling things, settling life a little bit. And uh, so, um, yeah, I'm willing to obviously continue recycling drive and overseeing students and everything we're working on. But I just don't want to realistically over commit, because I just, you know, I still have a job and family, so.
Yeah, yeah.
As we all have our things. It's really crazy when you get sick, right, Mary? Like, I was in bed for six days and it was like life just, it was like playing catch up.
Piled up, yeah, piled up in front of you, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what Marty's like, I lost two weeks, you know, and uh, um, it is, it, it's just, it's just lingering, but, you know.
Yeah.
It there. But I said, I didn't, I didn't test positive, but I, I was worse than him, who was positive, so who knows?
You didn't have flu and you didn't have COVID allegedly.
Well, I figured I probably must have had the flu. Um, but I tested like four different times for COVID. Um, just Marty kept making me so he could come out of the basement. And I'd be like, I'm still negative, goodbye. Um, but uh, you know, who knows? I mean, I did have my flu shot, so, and the COVID boosters, so it just, tis the season.
Yeah, so many people are getting sick this year. I don't know what's going on. If we got, we lost our immunity over when we were all hibernating separately, yes.
Yeah, exactly.
So, alright, so we'll uh, I'll set up, I'll send out some emails on that. No rushes, no rush to reply on uh, stuff. We have till next, next meeting and then some before we actually decide what our schedule's gonna be and uh. Some of these other things, so. Um, I don't think I have, we can't do the meet, we can't approve the minutes, so we'll have to hold that over. Um, and. Let's see, I don't have anything else on my list. Does anybody else have any questions or?
Well, I wanted to say something and it, it's too bad, they're, they're not here, but um. We had the um, the annual boards and commissions dinner. And I was um, chatting with um, one of the other town employees, Linda Finger in the Planting and Zoning Department. And when it came time to sit for dinner, um, we were just, we happened to be standing right near um, a table. Where there were a few of the uh, sustainability team slash Conservation Commission people there. And um, so we sat with um, Pam was there and April and Richard. And Tim Coughlin, and Tim Coughlin and I sort of caught up because our kids went to Tash with school together, so that was really fun. And we had such a nice time. And it's, you know, I only, I only ever see you all at, at this sort of thing. So it was really nice to chat a little bit and socialize and get to know each other. And it, I thought it was really fun, really nice. Nice, nice to, to have a little different context, so.
Yeah, well, that's good. Nice. Alright, um, yeah, I missed that one, but maybe I'll get next year's. Maybe I'll get there next year.
It was fun and the food was good and. There were really no boring speeches, so.
Yeah, there you go. Alright, um, well, everybody have a great um, holiday and New Year's and everything. Holidays plural.
Same to all of you.
Yeah, you too. Everyone.
And uh, good luck with your mom, Mari, it's, it's tough, I know.
Yeah. Thank you guys so much, yeah. Really challenging, thanks.
Take care of you at the same time, of course, so.
Yeah.
We could sit again. So, okay, goodbye, everybody.
Everybody, have a happy holiday. Stay in touch.
Okay, we'll do. See ya.
Take care, thank you.